Speaking of, please rise.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Welcome, everybody. Well, I'd like to start by making a motion to offer to go into contract negotiations with Dr. Meyer for a superintendent of the Clinton School District.
I'll second that.
Thank you. And under discussion, I think a couple of things have happened in the process which I think are important to mention. So, one of them, I have to say that Ed's passion for Dr. Meyer was probably perceived by me and I think by others is perhaps maybe too passionate. I think that when he mentioned coming, that Dr. Meyer was applying for this school and only this, and Dr. Mosley wasn't, and I have to just say that both those gentlemen are extremely well educated, have their doctorates, have devoted their lives to education, and in fairness to Dr. Mosley who obviously withdrew. You know, it sort of demeaned his career by saying that he was just applying, it sounded like he was just applying willy-nilly, and I just want to say that that isn't the case. The other part of that is that, unrelated to Dr. Mosley at all, is that, so the perception, and I heard this, and I'm not from Clinton, so I don't know the good old boy network because I'm not from here, so I'm not part of that, I don't know much, but I do hear that word. And I want to say that Dr. Meyer, not only did he interview well, but his references were nothing but sterling. And I'm assuming everybody called, I, there are two things that came out. We also had a site visit, and I'm sure people will talk to this, an extremely intelligent and organized and caring person who cares very deeply for children, which came out over and over again. And two things came out in the calls. One was from Brooke Clenchey, the superintendent of schools, who couldn't have spoken any, over at Nishoba, couldn't have spoken any highly, more highly of Dr. Meyer. And also, a former colleague of his from the Winchendon School District, mentioned to me that at some point when Dr. Meyer was there, they had a loss, there's nothing worse than losing a student, and how compassionate and caring Dr. Meyer was. And one of the things I really feel is that compassion and empathy are not things that you can kind of add on, that's a built-in personality trait. And it was very heartening, you'd obviously never want to experience that, but it was very heartening to hear how he had responded to that situation for the district and for the children. I would say that his ability to, in terms of organization and scheduling, I mean, we sat yesterday with, I guess, at least a dozen individuals out in Athol that came from combination administration, parents, teachers, from Royalston and Athol. And one of the questions was, tell us something negative, tell us something bad. And Mr. Bates emphasized the fact that none of us were going to say anything outside, but the fact is, in all the people that I spoke with, and all the people we spoke to yesterday, they all said the same thing, they don't want him to leave, he's been the best superintendent they ever had, that he is, cares deeply for the children of the district, he's, I think, started them on a course towards growth, and they really regret it. And the fact that he was in every school every day and greeted the children, which is something that they had never experienced before, were all extremely positive. And I just, so that's my little speech, I think that I have great faith that, from what I've certainly witnessed and heard, that we would be well-served to have Dr. Meyer be our next superintendent. So, with that, if you guys have something you want to say, I'm happy to turn it over.
I would agree. I mean, I think that, you know, this is, it's been, obviously, it's been a long process, the public part of the process has been drawn out maybe more than we would have wanted it to be. But, you know, I do feel that having taken this last step in the process, for me, reaffirmed and I think solidified the reasons why I think Dr. Meyer is going to be an exceptional superintendent. In addition to the phone calls, and as Chair Epstein said, that there, you know, the questions that you try to ask are, you know, not necessarily negative things, and I think both Mr. Mendoza and I both asked the questions, so where, you know, where are the areas where we need to support the superintendent, where does he need to grow? And, you know, what we heard consistently is, you know, there are always going to be areas where he's going to bring in people, he's going to solve problems together, he's a change agent, he is data-driven, he will sort through the things that need to be sorted through to build the kind of change and collaborative strategic vision that our community has said is the number-one priority in what they're looking for. I think that, you know, the town, our teachers, our parents, and most importantly, our students are going to, you know, experience this next level of school leadership. And I, Mr. Chairman, I couldn't agree more. I think that, you know, facing the challenges that all superintendents face is, you know, it's not an easy job under any circumstances, and particularly difficult in Clinton with such a small infrastructure in the central office. And I have, you know, based on not a small amount of experience, every confidence that he is going to be an outstanding superintendent here.
Thank you.
If I could go next?
Yeah.
So, when we go through the references and we go to the site visit, there's, it's clear that Dr. Myers is passionate about kids. The thing that I struggle with, though, is Athol is currently a Level Four. Dr. Myers has only been in charge of the district for six months. And in his time as an administrator, we haven't seen a track record of moving off of, if he went to a building and it was at a three, we haven't seen that move to a two. We haven't seen any of those success areas of data to go back to. And because of that, I have reservation, because I would like to see us shooting for higher than we are, and I would like to see us shoot to be a Level One district, currently a Level Two, on the line of potentially being a Level Three in the future. And I would like to see us have a leader with proven track record of success to help us maintain initially a Level Two, but get us to be a Level One.
I would say that I don't think, number one, he had the opportunity to do it, I don't think he had the timeframe to do it. I think the things that I heard yesterday that he had put in place to address the issues, whether it was, whether, one of the things that came out was how, I think the expression was the only tool in the chest or something like that, for children that they couldn't meet the needs end up with, in a special needs category. I think that he, what I heard yesterday was that his involvement was at every level, and that I think that from an organizational and a, you know, and from scheduling, he's done a tremendous amount of groundwork to address the things that made them a Level Four district. I don't think, he's not going to work a miracle, we're not going to be a Level One district next year, maybe we will, but I don't, you know, I just think that he, but I think that he brings that level of involvement and that level of expertise, that I think he will go through everything that exists here today in, with the goal of getting us to that Level One. I know that is his goal, and I do believe he's got the skills and the skill set to marshal what we have to get there. That's what I heard, I don't disagree, that's where they are now, he hasn't had a chance to be there long enough to move it, but I did hear the types of things he had already done that, to me, would address those very issues, given time. And as a matter of fact, one of the people that we visited with actually said that, that they really felt confident that some of the things he's put in place would start to work to get them to a Level Two within, you know, they, she then said, I think, quote-unquote, I don't know if it's happened, but within the next year, but she really felt confident that the attention to the details that he had paid would manifest themselves in an improvement across the board. So, while what you're saying is true relative to where they are, but I do think that what I heard yesterday was somebody who investigated, and as Mr. Bates said, got assets together that, to help through any of the situations he's faced. And this is a guy who's been everywhere in that district.
And what I'm saying, it's an unknown, you know, six months as superintendent, but more than two years as principal of the high school that stayed at the Level Three the entire time that he was in charge, hasn't moved off of Level Three. I'm not saying that it might not happen, but what I'm saying is, we're sitting today with an unknown, we're sitting today without a track record of success to be of the point to, to show that it has happened and it's going to happen. It's an unknown, it's a could-be, is what I'm saying. It might get there, you're absolutely right, but today, what we're working with for data, what we're working for for past history, we don't have that information to work with.
Yeah. So, I guess I would, with all due respect, and I think that the concern on the surface is valid, but, you know, from the time as an interim superintendent, it's been well over a year that he's been superintendent, and was assistant superintendent for two years prior to that. And I, so, so I think that, for the uninitiated, the way accountability works is that your school district is assigned the lowest-level accountability rating based on whatever the lowest school is in that district. So, in the case of the Athol-Royalston School District, there were four elementary schools, three in Athol, one in Royalston. And one of those elementary schools had a significant level of need and poverty and performance issues. And so, that was the only school in the district that was a Level Four. And so, therefore, the school district is Level Four. So, I guess I take a slightly different perspective on it, and while your concern is absolutely valid, I think what he was able to do, to Mr. Epstein's point, is that, you know, they recognized there was an issue. They put their resources together, combined the elementary schools, made the tough choices to say, we're going to have one leadership, it's the Athol Central Elementary School Aces, and we're going to provide the resources, we're going to provide the professional development, we're going to refocus, you know, what it means for elementary literacy, addressing those needs, addressing the needs of the learners that were struggling. And so, and, you know, we all know that those changes don't happen overnight, they don't happen in a year, they don't happen in two years. But everyone that we spoke to, again, to Mr. Epstein's point, spoke to a superintendent who recognizes that, in order to make change, you have to make tough choices. You bring people together, you talk about what the issues are, you use data to support your argument, and you make the tough call. And there were some tough calls, and yet, to be able to do that and still have, and we met with the elementary, the elementary leadership team and the middle, high school leadership team, to a person to say, he may not always like the decision, but he will approach it in such a way that he will build consensus. And I think that there is hardly much more than we can ask for in terms of moving us forward. So, again, while I understand your concern, it's really not a concern for me, and I think that he has demonstrated in very practical terms that those kinds of things can happen.
So, I guess I, I guess we'll look up the comments, so. Well, did you say he was superintendent for a year?
He was the interim superintendent last year.
Right, interim, okay, all right. But he hasn't been superintendent.
And all of this year, so it's over a year.
Right, okay. So, to that point, I mean, I guess my concern is, I would feel much, way more comfortable if we had had an opportunity to actually have more candidates in place right now. How this whole process transpired, whether, you know, I don't want to be a Monday night quarterback, but things happened that perhaps shouldn't have happened, and we had candidates that dropped out. So, now we're left with one candidate. So, we vetted, we had to go to one site visit, it wasn't doing school hours, it was after school hours, would have been nice to see how that happened during school hours. Everybody had positive things to say, but I wouldn't expect anything else from any site visit that I'm going to get any negative comments from anybody when you do any site visits for anybody who you work for. It's a small place, and I'm not questioning people's motives by any chance, but it's a concern. It was also mentioned that he actually didn't fill the assistant superintendent's position, so assuming he used those monies to take care of some of those needs that were happening. So, I questioned what's going to happen this year when the budget gets tighter, are they going to be able to continue to do the same stuff? Some of the same problems we're facing, but again, it's an unknown, that's why I bring it up.
That's exactly what our superintendent did, by the way, when he was hired.
I'm not disagreeing, that's why I just said that. Okay, so, you know, everybody has an opinion, you had yours, you had a lot of say in it, okay? I have my opinion, you know, and I respect your opinion, I hope you respect mine. You don't, yeah, we don't have to agree on it, but it's about respecting the opinions. Again, it would have been nice to have more candidates, okay? How it went down, I think some of my candidates may have decided not to come in because it looked like it was already set up for somebody else, the perception. And a lot of times, it's about perception, I hate that phrase, perception is reality, but that happens sometimes, so.
And all due respect. And I respect your opinion.
I still have the floor, Mr. Bates, I didn't interrupt you, so thank you. So, and I don't want to get to a big, you know, arguing back and forth, and, you know, everybody has an opinion, so I'm just stating mine. Yes, he has a doctorate, you know, he's passionate, I think Dr. Mosley was passionate, too, some of similar traits, but we don't have that opportunity because he dropped out for whatever reason. I don't want to dwell into that too much, but, but there was, there was positive things also, you already mentioned them, so I don't need to repeat them, but, anyway, thank you, Mr. Epstein.
Mr. Epstein, if I may, just real quick, I mean, we had thirty-five applicants that started this process, so to make the argument that we don't have enough candidates, I just, I just don't think that that's logical. This process started with thirty-five and made its way down to the candidates that we had. People drop out for different reasons, and, I mean, Dr. Meyer had just as much reason, I think, to drop out as anybody else did, there was this, we were a divided school committee at the time. So, I don't think it's fair to place somebody dropping out of a race on the school committee's shoulders or on my shoulders because they didn't think that they got the support. I mean, that's their decision, that, you know, when you're going to be in a superintendent, you're going to have to deal with adversity. So, you know, I can't speak to somebody else's decision-making process to drop out, but they did, and we're still left with a very qualified candidate, and I think that we would be foolish to pass up this opportunity. And the only other thing is, you know, we preached about the importance of these site visits, and it's, you know, the site visit went very well for Dr. Meyer, so now, even though a week ago, we talked about how important the site visit was, now we're questioning how important site visits are. So, I'm just kind of, I'm just a little at a loss.
I don't mean to cut you off, but I learned a lot yesterday. Me, too, I thought that it was very valuable.
Yeah, you, I, more, Mr. Mendoza's comments about the, about the site visit, I just don't, it's, I just don't know what humanly possible, like what else, I mean, does, I don't know what else we can do.
I'm not suggesting we didn't have any site visits, I'm just saying.
Yeah, questioning whether, like, it was even worth it, I mean.
What I'm saying is, we had one site visit, we didn't have any other opportunities to be able to compare site visits to other site visits because there weren't other candidates. If you recall in past meetings, I suggested that we bring more than four candidates to the table because I foresaw that people would drop out for different reasons. So, the more candidates you have, the more choice you have. So, that was just, that's just hindsight, but I did suggest that at times, the board voted for it, because the other board, no problem, we moved on, so.
I think, I think, I guess, you know, when you go on an interview, I always, I always say, people are, I'm assuming you know what your, what your skill is and you'll interview well, and I think, so in a sense, just like a site visit, yes, I suppose you're not going to bring somebody in here who, who's against you or however you put it, so, yes, so I suppose you could say that it would be stocked with supporters, though every one of them don't want him to leave. And I have to say, I spoke to three references and another person who worked with Dr. Meyer independently, who wasn't on his list, to find out how that person, how it was when he was in Winchendon. And so, what I'd say is that the references were as positive in their details of what he had accomplished, how he handles himself, how he is, how his children focus, all those things give me great confidence in Dr. Meyer as an individual. I have to say, you know, one of the reservations I had and I spoke to him was, yes, he had been in Clinton before, and so, my reservation partially was, so if he was here, will he be able to make decisions independently? Will he be able to look at what needs to be done? And that was my concern, and I said that to him when we invited him back in, I said, really, I mean, it's nothing to do with his capability, everything I had heard was good. And he came back last night to talk to us and stated emphatically that he understands that, he understands that perception, but that he will come in and establish via the school committee a game plan, an entry plan, and will speak with the people he needs to speak with. And what he said was, you know, his expectations, whatever they will be and how they're outlined, those are the things that he would expect regardless of the person, regardless of the friendship that existed, regardless of his time here. So, whatever, whatever his vision is, and one of the things I said to him is that I have no, I have no vision in the sense of telling a superintendent what he, she should do, I think that's their role, but I do think what he said to us loud and clear is, once he's had that entrance plan, once he's got a game plan together for the district, when he asks Person A to do X, Y, and Z, if that isn't done, then, then that will be revisited. So, I don't think, he gave me the confidence that, and I also have to say that I asked the same question to the superintendent at Nishoba, and she absolutely felt that he would make the decisions that need to be made to benefit the children of the district. And that's really what I needed to hear. And I don't know Brooke Clenchey at all, first time I ever spoke with her. She was lovely and she took the time to tell me, but that was, she was very emphatic about her confidence in his keeping his eye on where he wanted the district to go, and that that would be how he would lead. And so, I think he answered fairly that concern, and that was my concern, and I think he hit it, he came, he took the time at the end of our site visit to sit down and say, you know, are there any other concerns? And obviously, that was, that was my big concern, and I thought he really, very fairly outlined how he would approach what he needs to do. So, with that, I'm confident. There are probably, we could be at this forever. I understand, you know, we started with a larger pool, we don't have that pool now, we have Dr. Meyer, but I don't, and what we've said all along, and I absolutely believe this, this is a candidate of high qualification, who's grown tremendously, I mean, you can't think of a person who came in here as a twenty-two, twenty-three-year-old and taught, and now has gone on and gotten two masters and is a doctorate, and has dedicated his life to education. I think, obviously, we all mature, I don't think I'd want to be held to the person I was at twenty-two versus the person that I was at forty. I think, you know, I don't want to say I'd be embarrassed, but I don't think I would stand on it, and I think the same would be true for Dr. Meyer. I think he has clearly chosen a path, and not only that, he's dedicated himself to that, he works, he works, he's on the board of directors, a board that leads the CAPS Collaborative, which is like our FLAC Collaborative. He's, he's, he's put himself where he needs to be, and it's, it's a mark of dedication, it's not, it's not to do something to be getting noticed. Everything I heard was a person who's dedicated his life to the pursuit of helping children grow. So, I do think that we have a good candidate, I don't see any reason to go backwards. I do think, look, one of the things that happens when you negotiate a contract, you know, we have expectations, we were going to sit down and negotiate with him, and clearly, if the expectations of the committee, which they will speak to, are that we get to be a Level One school within some relatively reasonable amount of time, then clearly, that would be part of the contract. And so, I don't have that fear, I, you know, my feeling is that as, that's the only hire we make, and so, if our employee, our CEO, doesn't do what he said he would do, then that's the decision of the school committee in the evaluation process to say, hey, look, this isn't working. I have no, I have great confidence that it won't come to that. But the reality is, I think he's got the talent to marshal the resources we have and move the district forward. And he's, and he's, a couple of other things I heard, I mean, number one, he's obviously was a mathematician, so he's, he's good with numbers, he's good with data, he's good with scheduling. One of the creative means that they talked about yesterday was, was working with scheduling to get more time, both for the students and the teachers, and get, set it up in a way the teachers got to work together, to team, to team together. This is a guy that, one of the comments I got from one of the references was able to articulate schedules, and she kept, are you reading that? It was, it was all up here. Now, I, and I know how complex it is, I always joke that if I was in school today, I would never get to class because it changes every day, every class is different, the periods are different, I would be, it wasn't like that when I was in school. So, I think, and he was able to articulate this right from memory, he knew, he knew every, every class, and they said the same thing at the, at the site visit.
Yep.
And so, I think this is someone who's, like I said, dedicated his life to the betterment of children, and they're our most valuable resource in this town, they're the future. And so, I think I could see him in that role, sitting there as superintendent, and I think he will be, will be well-served by it. Motion's on the floor. Yeah, I would call for a vote, and I would, and I would hope, look, I understand the opinions, and, but I would hope that we could vote as a board, as a five, five in favor. I think that clearly I understand Mr. Mendoza's reservations, Mr. McNair's reservations, and they're well-taken, but I do think that, that we need to make the next superintendent the best superintendent he can be. And I said this to Mr. Ngano the other day, I mean, I think when I first got on under Ed Philbin, and I remember when Mr. Gaw was elected, and I went into his office, and I went to the office when Mr. Ngano was selected, and I said, my job is to make you the best superintendent you can be. And that's the job of the school committee, to work hand-in-hand with the superintendent, to lead the district forward, and so, you're really an asset to one another. And that's really our role, because he, I, barring something, again, this is sort of pending a successful negotiation in the contract, but assuming that's successful, he will be the next superintendent. So, I would really ask if we could vote in favor of Dr. Meyer, with the reservations I've heard, I understand that, they're clear. favor of Dr. Meyer. With the reservations I've heard, I understand that. They're clear. Articulated both of them well. And I understand. And I do think, like I said, the expectations of the board will be to address those very issues as best we can. All right? So I can't say it any better than that. I understand.
No, I want to say that when we first selected the first candidate, there wasn't another vote to make that unanimous either. So again.
The chairman did ask if we could do that.
I don't remember, I don't recollect that. I don't remember that. And I don't remember us taking that vote. And so it wasn't done unanimously either. So I'm just stating it just for a fact that how it transpired the first time around, you know. But I respect your request and your opinion.
Well, I'll ask for a vote for Dr. Meyer for superintendent. So if it's three, and I'm assuming that the two are against, okay. Then that's the vote.
Mr. Chairman, just, is the negotiating committee, is that already set? Are we just going off of-
I believe it'll be Michael and I.
Okay. I just, I just didn't know if it was worth, I mean, Joel had been in this process from the beginning with the search. I just didn't know if it'd be appropriate to have him be involved.
The contract will be approved by the whole committee.
Okay.
So unless, unless, you know, I had offered originally that Michael was going to do it. And basically, what we'll do is work off of his existing contract and our existing contract, take the points that, in mutual agreement, and get a hybrid of the two and present that for approval to the whole school committee. So, and what I would say is that you and I would meet first, go through the two contracts, discuss what the priorities may be, maybe get that back to the board, and then sit down with Dr. Meyer and hash that out. It shouldn't be, I mean, I don't think, my initial conversation with him, he does not have expectations that are not something we planned for. So I think, I think every confidence it's going to work out fine, but you have to do it. So we'll do that and go from there.
Mr. Chairman, for the record, just because someone votes in the negative or thinks we vote, doesn't mean that they would not work whoever's in charge and work to make sure that they're successful.
I understand.
So just make it clear.
Appreciate you putting that out there, too. Appreciate you putting that out there, too.
It's a fact. You know, people don't particularly, you know, when you take this job, you don't do it for the money. You do it for what you believe is right for the kids.
I do it for money.
I don't believe anybody in this, no. But I think you do. Yeah. Big Don is doing it. But you work together and you do the best you can. That's just the bottom line. But you always work professionally.
Mr. Chairman, we hadn't, we do have people here. We hadn't scheduled public comment, but do we want to wait until Monday or?
It's not scheduled. I would, it's not being on the agenda.
It wasn't scheduled. I would be happy to have you show on Monday. I'd be happy to give you the floor to say anything to us if you'd like. It is Friday afternoon.
Fair enough.
I did promise my wife that it would not be a long meeting. I don't, I know that's not a prior, but I did say that. And I think we've covered what we said we'd do in the agenda. But Monday, I would absolutely entertain your comments on Monday because we do have public comment. I'm sorry?
It's in the agenda for Monday.
Absolutely. It's always in the agenda. And I'm always happy to entertain your comments. So that's, that would be fun. So I hope everybody has a good weekend. And I hope we see you on Monday. If you have, if you'd like to attend, I'd be happy to.
I move, we adjourn.
Yeah. Thank you.